Okay. Recording. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty six P M. Being conducted in conjunction with Governor Baker's March two thousand and twenty order that remote conferencing or remote meetings for our public. Bodies. Please stand for a. Floyd Leggins.
Floyd Leggins. From the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? Can you hear us?
Can we hear you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's it. Want to do the, is the advisory committee here? Are they on?
Paul is here.
Okay.
Heather's here.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll skip the, we'll put the minutes, meeting minutes at the end because we got a lot of guests this evening. Advisory Committee Special Town Meeting Warrant. You had some questions. We answered them via email. Do you have any further questions?
Can, can you hear me, Tom?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yes, thanks for putting us on. We, as we indicated in the email, we met last Tuesday. And reviewed the draft warrant and forwarded those questions to you, which you answered comprehensively. I think there were a couple of items that we wanted to have a little further discussion on. Specifically whether or not we should hold some of these articles till the annual town meeting. For the, you know, for the regular business of the town, if, if they don't have some urgency to them. You know, specifically, it was articles three, four, six, and seven that we had concerns. Were not. Part of the discussion leading up to the annual town meeting, and then they have, have appeared now for the special town meeting. And wondering if we should push those over to the spring.
Well, Article Three is the removal of the moratorium on solar installation. So. That's a, a, a house cleaning item, and I, I think I would have to address the, the planning board about that if they would want to take it off and put it till the spring. Article Four, I think we need to get done because that's the, the emergency medical technician based bylaw. Right now, we don't have a bylaw that allows. An ambulance service to be in a building in, in the town. Other than that, I believe at a town facility. And the, the planning board was good enough to spot that and quickly got together a bylaw. So I think we need to go forward on that.
Okay, so, so four has some, some time pressure to it.
Yeah, four has time pressure to it because they would technically, they'd be in violation of the bylaw.
Right, okay.
Six, uh, the pilot is, I don't know, what do you think, John? They're, they've got a long way to go yet, so.
But I mean, it's such a, no money to it and really never has any discussion. It's just authority to move forward. We have a table somewhere of the different solar projects and the pilot status and authority status we could share with you. But if this all of a sudden broke loose and they wanted to go, we'd have the ability to start the ball rolling. So it's, as you know, in the past, we've got two or three of these. It just gives us the authority to start the conversation about a pilot. Doesn't.
John, do you recall, do you recall if any of these authorization articles have been on to the special town meetings?
I think so.
The. So you, so you think there may be something that develops between now and May regarding the, the solar? That would require this authorization?
Well, we might want to be able to discuss the pilot because if they break, so to speak, if it breaks free and starts going. If we had the pilot in place, it would give the board an opportunity to bring it into our revenue stream for the next fiscal year.
Which project is this for, John?
This is, this is the rear of Summers Road Potash, the Borrego project. I think it's ninety something acres.
Is that, who, who's the sponsor of Article Six?
The, the selectmen.
That, that's the, that's the board, okay.
Yeah.
So it sounds like you, you prefer to keep that one on.
Yeah, I think we do.
Okay.
If you'd like, you can do a little research and get the history of different pilots we've authorized, Doug.
Yeah.
And have that ready for your discussion or your advisory hearing.
Right, it's just, I mean, we, we have always tried, we, the town have always tried to, you know, do the regular business of the town during the annual town meeting. And, you know, say the special for cleanup articles. And it appears what's been happening is, you know, we as a town are expanding the, the. What we expect out of the special town meeting to more than cleanup. Which, which may or may not be a good thing, but i- if we do that, it probably is something that should be discussed as opposed to just happening on an ad hoc basis. And then Article Seven, the fire station. Looking for some, some money to at least get the, get it underway with. I don't know if you're looking at study or design options, but how much, how much money are you, do you anticipate Article Seven will be?
Don, if I can jump in?
Yeah, good.
I've done some talking to different contractors in the past couple of days. If the board wanted to, I wouldn't feel adverse to taking a pass on this article right now because I don't think the number we were talking about. Is really justified by the solution we need to do, where we don't have access to money available, plus the opportunity for a grant. As well.
Yeah.
So I think that we could accomplish the safety fix we're trying to do with money either we have access to or money that's coming into us. And we don't need to appropriate this money. That's my feeling.
So just, just to be clear, Doug, just so people aren't confused, this is not the renovation or, you know, construction on the, the. Firehouse. This is to address just a safety issue with the exhaust at this point. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right, the, basically a review was done and there was a concern raised that there's a potential problem with the exhaust. Further review, I think, has led me to, to see that it's a little, I don't want to say overblown, but there can be, there's. Three or four different ways of looking at it. And I think we can achieve, and I think the board hopefully would agree. Achieve something that provides safety to the firefighters without the exorbitant price that, so to speak, the architect came up with.
Right, right, and I, and I would say that we, we should develop a long range plan for the fire station and then be willing to spend that amount of money at the beginning if that's necessary for the plan. But at this point, it seems premature to spend that amount of money if there's a cheaper solution that will, that will give, give safety to everybody and address the issue.
I don't want to say that we're, look, we're pushing it down the road. No, we want to address the problem. We're looking for, I would say, a. High efficiency, low cost solution for it that doesn't require appropriate at the town meeting.
And plus we have this, plus we have this FEMA grant out there that we potentially could get, which would be sixty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, that would, that would help. Has anything changed with regards to the operation in the fire department, or is it simply that the, the regulatory obligation has changed?
As far as operation, no. And it's been, it's been an ongoing concern, but the, so regulatory probably if they come in, but not, not the, the operation hasn't changed, it's, you know.
Okay, so, so it's essentially the status quo with the firehouse.
Yeah.
And now, now we're complying with additional regulation.
Yeah.
Well.
I'm not sure.
Regulations that we're not really sure that apply to municipal buildings, however, it's good practice that we want to apply to.
Right.
So if somebody brought up a concern, we want to find a way to address it, and the board is committed to getting that done.
And, and I, and I apologize because I, I haven't been involved in, in the discussions over the past several weeks. I've, I've pulled back from town issues. But is the fire department involved in these discussions?
Yes. I, I, what do you, in terms of, what do you mean?
In terms of addressing.
They applied for the grant.
Okay, so, so they've been involved in identifying the issue and working towards a solution.
Yeah, and they've applied for the grant, and then I came up with a proposal to move the, some of the fire, the firefighters here to do work. During the day if they, to be out of the building for the exhaust, but. They had concern, they had concerns about the COVID and also the radio reception and that stuff in the building.
So given a choice, they'd, they'd prefer the, they'd prefer the diesel exhaust rather than the potential COVID.
Correct, correct. Yes. Yeah.
Can't blame them for that.
You can always turn the car off.
Right, right. And they can always have the fire trucks outside, so.
Okay, so, so in terms of, of the, the special town meeting, do you anticipate requesting any money on Article Seven, or are you going to keep it on there as a placeholder, or? What do you think we're going to do with it?
Well, I'd prefer to leave it on so that if we get, if, discuss it if anybody had the question, you know, but I would, I would recommend the board, no action at this point. As long as we have our ducks in a row, we found a, a solution.
I, I would sort of prefer to take it off because it's just going to open a whole discussion of the fire report. And we're not, and we're not really ready to make a presentation on that. It would be sophistication that it would need to inform the public. So my thinking would be to, to take it off. We're not going to hear about the grant until first of the year, maybe. Okay, so we don't really have anything to say except maybe if, could be, you know, so it seems to me that. It's a discussion not worth having if you know.
Well, we're not looking to get into improving the fire station. We're just looking to clear up this exhaust problem. And maybe, and I don't want to say the labeling of this might be too broad, and I think that's your concern there because we're talking, when it says fire station improvements, no. This was strictly for the exhaust.
Right.
That was what this article was, not the whole scope, if you will. And I can see your concern. You might say, people might see this like, oh, my gosh, they're going to talk about the whole.
Well, that, and, and if I were there, I would say, well, what are the other safety concerns? And there are twelve of them. So, I mean.
Exactly, and then it opens up completely, right.
Up the whole can of worms in my mind.
Well, yeah, but to keep in mind, a lot of those safety concerns don't apply to municipalities.
To what?
Municipalities, so, you know.
Can I add something? This is Paul Gagladucci. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit concerned. I don't know how Bob Markle feels about this, but to me, my experience is that once you've identified something, that sort of puts you in a catch twenty-two. So I, I'm a little bit concerned that we're, we've identified that there's a problem at the fire station and then we're going to send them back into the fire station. So to me, I think either we work on Don's suggestion, which is we relocate them to the town hall. And see if we can mitigate any of the issues that are there. Or we look into the possibility of renting a small, a very small trailer that can go next to the fire station. Yeah, I, I just have a problem. I have a, I think Mary Ellen's right. I think we need a long-term plan. I think all of that's good. But I think we, we kind of put ourselves in a precarious situation by sending them back in. So if anything, maybe there's some small amount of money to rent a trailer that's heated so they can have it during the winter. And they're free and they're right there, they're right two steps away from the fire station, or that they work on Don's project, his suggestion. That's, that's just my thought.
If I may, Tom, account on here.
Yep.
You could also change the wording to just simply authorize the treasurer to borrow. In anticipation of revenue. That way, specifically for the, the system. It's a placeholder. It's not an appropriation. It's an authorization. If something changes between now and the spring town meeting. You've got the ability to move ahead with it.
Well.
Let's, let's, let's do this.
I was going to say, we're going to have to have a little more discussion on this.
Yeah, let's do this then to start. Change the heading of it. Basically, we need to reopen the warrant, change the description of the article to basically an article to look at the exhaust upgrade. For fire station, which is all we're talking about at this point, and then close the warrant again for posting.
Okay.
Would you agree with that? So we're not giving the broad title. It might confuse people.
And we still might not take any.
We still might not take any action, but all we're going to address, if anything, would be the exhaust concern. Now, that could also be, as Paul said, that might also be appropriating money for a trailer, which would address the exhaust concern. Because that heading would say we're dealing with, it might include two thousand dollars for a trailer if we haven't got that money. Who's to say? But we should be clear that that's what we're addressing in this article.
Well, I don't have a problem with, with, if that's what the majority wants to do. I just think that it does open a whole can of worms that. For a discussion. I mean, that discussion may not happen, and if it doesn't, then we'll just address that. But if other people bring up and say, well, what about this? And what about this concern? And I read the report and I thought, saw this, you know, but it's, it's, I don't have a, I'm not strongly in favor. I just think that it's. It's.
So your suggestion is to change it to what?
Change it to basically a funding for.
Exhaust, exhaust upgrade.
For, for, how about for mitigation?
Okay. Pam is taking down the language because you're going to sign it tonight, so.
So once we sign it tonight, it's in, or, I mean, this would be, it's a done deal then?
Yeah, because they got to.
Take it out then, because it has to be posted.
Funding for mitigation of, of, funding for mitigation of. Last issue.
Now. Talking to a couple contractors, they say it could be as simple, and if there's anybody online, you put a, a detector on there that pretty much fires off the fan when it gets to a level. And it could be as simple as that. You could be putting anything, bad stuff, tubes on the exhaust pipes of the trucks, just like you do in service stations. And before you start them up and they're, they're vented outside. These might be low-cost solutions that we might entertain. And those type of things, Don, you probably could find money for a inside the operations budget and with a promise to reimburse. At maybe the, another town meeting or transfer. But I still think if we're being told this is a concern, we should show that we're looking at it.
We could also, we could also just mandate that the, that the, the trucks be started up outside. Because that would solve the problem, too.
Well, they have to be left outside.
Left outside, but they can, they can be left outside.
A while?
Yeah, they, they have systems that they can attach to keep them warm. Yeah. Yes, right, right.
Yeah, not only that, if you have a snowstorm.
They have to clean them off. After they do, after they do, after they do your law, your driveway.
After they, after the town does my driveway, they could clean up the.
Exactly, exactly.
And Mary, Mary Ellen, kids don't walk around with snow shovels anymore after storms.
All right, that's, so we're going to, we're going to change the wording to mitigation of exhaust to see if the town will vote. To raise an appropriate or transfer from bill of some, the sum of money to mitigate exhaust issues at the Hampton Fire Station, or to take any action there, too. And as a placeholder, we might not even use it.
Right, it might be no action.
Right. All right, want to talk about the short-term debt?
Just before we do that, just, just before we do that, Don, if, if we could just jump to Article eleven, the.
Eleven, oh, yeah. Well, you got to change the wording there, right?
The wording, because we're not talking about a transfer from stabilization. It, it would be from unappropriated available funds.
I changed it.
Okay, I don't, I'm, I'm looking at last week's edition.
So this is the three forty-seven P M. Edition, Doug.
Yeah, yeah.
I cut and paste that article from a prior warrant and then when I saw general.
Right.
Actually, it was pointed out to me by the treasurer, too, that general stabilization is not the place that they're going to be taking money if they are. Could be free cash.
Okay.
And I think, I think that leaves short-term debt. The, the proposal that came out of Dick was that out of the free cash of. Just looking, it was around four hundred and thirty-five thousand. That we apply one hundred and ninety thousand to the outstanding short-term debt. And the short-term debt, I believe, is five hundred and sixty-five thousand, and that's debt that was incurred for the. D P W dump truck and the communication system for police and fire. So that five hundred and sixty-five is currently on short-term notes that Dick has been taking out. His recommendation is to apply a hundred and ninety towards that and then continue to carry the balance on short-term notes. Until our, our picture, our financial picture is a little clearer next year and the following year.
That must be a, a reduction already because wasn't the radio station, radio equipment five hundred just by itself? So he must have made one payment to reduce this already, and the truck is usually.
Two sixty-five, I thought it was.
Two forty.
Yeah, I believe, I believe there was a payment towards the communication system.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the truck was two hundred and sixty-five, I think it was.
Right, right.
So as you know, my issue with that is that the current interest rate, I believe it's one point five five that we got on this particular last time. That if we apply a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, that, I'd rather apply that a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to the tax rate. Which would save everybody, if they have a two hundred, seven, a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home, they would save them eighty-seven dollars and some change. At the end, because we're only, the only difference in the interest would be three thousand dollars from, we're paying like five thousand, seven hundred now to go down to three thousand something. Or, you know, but we about, it'd be about three thousand, a little bit more than three thousand dollar savings, which over the course of, even if it was twenty years, would be only. Two hundred, it would be only sixty thousand dollars or about a dollar forty-two a year for people, so. I'm a, you know, I'm a. If I have the cash, I'd rather hold on to it and do something with it myself and let the bank carry my loan for a, a one and a half percent. So that's my, that's where I am on it. I don't, I have no say in it, probably.
Well, you're looking at, if you go with your way, the one ninety, the hundred for trees, the twenty for reserve, and a thousand for, you're at a buck twenty-five left over against the tax rate. What does that, what does that give you projected increase? With the one twenty-five?
It brings us to about two and a half percent on the rate.
But if we apply the hundred and ninety thousand, what does that do with the tax rate?
That's with the one ninety.
No, 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 if we, if we.
I said, that leaves a hundred and twenty-five left over. If you applied that towards the tax rate, what does it bring the increase to?
Oh, you apply, if you apply the hundred and ninety towards the tax rate?
No, the hundred and twenty-five. If you use the one ninety, you have one hundred and twenty-five thousand left in free cash. Applying that towards, so to speak, reducing the tax rate brings the increase to what? Leaving the one ninety in your proposal.
Um, I don't know. I don't know if we can run that, that quickly. We, we had some discussion last week in terms of what, what should the target. Increase be? Because we do have some flexibility or the ability to manipulate it based on what we apply. You know, the, the recommendation as it stands is to also take a hundred and eighty-two thousand and, and put it back into stabilization because we took three hundred out. At the last town meeting. Obviously, these numbers we can, you know, we, we can work with either up or down to, to hit the target that we, that we aim for. So, I mean, we, we were talking about a two and a half percent increase or perhaps a little bit less. And then backing out from that number and determining what we have to apply.
Well, if we have four thirty-five, and you got one ninety against the debt, we're talking a hundred, hundred to the trees. Twenty to the reserve, a thousand for conservation, brings us up to roughly three ten in appropriations, leaving. A hundred and twenty-five unused, if you will, in free cash. And we could either put that in stabilization and let the increase be what it is, or knock down the increase with the hundred and twenty-five.
I'm not sure your numbers are all correct, John. I mean, the, there's the cruiser on there, too.
Yeah, the cruiser's being paid for out of a non-free cash.
Okay, yep. And I don't, Dick is on the call. I, I don't know if he can unmute and weigh in on this.
Um, yeah, um, we weren't told that the cruiser was, we weren't sure the cruiser was coming out of free cash, but the calculations we made were based on. Or I'm sorry, out of another fund, so we're, the calculations were based on coming out of free cash. I'd like to counter Don's argument, and while it's valid, the reason I disagree with keeping the debt. Last year, we spent about one point three million dollars in non-reoccurring charges. The highway addition, the dump truck, the, the radio system and the tree removals, and we used the combination of stabilization fund and borrowing in order to do that. We paid about a third of it on the tax rate last year. So we end up with about two-thirds of it left. So that's why my proposal was to. Pay about a third of that outstanding debt down this year and put in about a third of what we put into stabilization back. Honestly, whether it goes into stabilization returning or reducing debt really doesn't matter. To Don's point, it's not the interest rate that I'm worried about. It's when we pay back the principal. I've been doing this long enough that I was around, admittedly in a different capacity, when we had the year of darkness, the blood in the street year. Where we closed the senior center, turned off all the streetlights and closed the library. And the reason that we did, the reason that we had to do that was we overextended slightly. In a year just before a downturn in municipal income. And I got to say that we're in a position right now where our municipal income in the future is unpredictable at best. I would say anything in two thousand and twenty is unpredictable at best. So I want to keep us in the best possible fiscal position that we can be so that we're not. We don't get blindsided by that kind of problem again. People are used to a, a two to two and a half percent increase in tax rate, and I think if we can stay in that market. In, in that, in that range, we won't be in any trouble.
Yeah, if I could add to that, I've, I've been talking about. Next year being our difficult year. And if we don't pay down some of that debt this year, we're going to have to pay down maybe twice as much next year.
Well, why would we have to pay down twice as much?
Well, you, you still have all the debt. You're still going to have to pay it off. If you owe five hundred thousand dollars and you pay a third of it now, you have to pay either two-thirds next year or a third next year and the third year after. The debt still has to be paid. We owe five, we owe, we owe over five hundred thousand dollars of debt.
But you don't incur any more debt.
So we don't, so we're, our plan is to pay this off in three years? We don't want to get a ten-year bond or a fifteen-year bond? Why would you do that on short-term purchases?
Yeah, this is, this is, yeah, that we.
I don't think a half a million bucks is a short-term purchase.
It is.
The radios are five-year material. You know, the, the trees is an immediate expense. If you bond that for twenty years, you're just going to be stuck paying it off when we actually have to do other things. Plus, you know, it's not a bad idea to actually tie the tax rate to what people vote to spend, instead of kicking the can down the road. To make it somebody else's problem. What about the truck? Isn't part of that money the truck?
Yeah.
And we buy a new truck every five years.
That's a depreciable item.
Let, let me just say with regards to the debt issue, I, I, I like to consider it in the context of the overall debt structure of the town. I mean, the, the Green Meadows bond will be paid off next fall, I believe it is. And that'll, that's, that'll be a hundred and eighty, and that'll finish the Green Meadows payment, so that'll drop off. But we have something that's going to be happening with the, the fire station, whatever, whatever that might be. The police station is, Dick, is that a ten-year?
No, that's a twenty-year.
A twenty-year.
But remember, we're doing a feasibility study on the senior center right now, too.
Right, we have a senior, we, you know, we also have, you know, at T W B, regardless of the status of that, of that building. We have a roof and a parking lot which have needed to be replaced, and obviously no decisions have been made. So we have some big-ticket items that we know about. Who knows what, you know, who knows what the unknowns are at this point? So to the extent that we can reduce our debt and put ourselves in the best capacity. Or the best situation to have capacity to incur debt to deal with these future issues, it seems to me that, that's the prudent course.
There you go. Well, you'll might, I mean. Well, you'll make, I mean, that's your decision is the advisory committee.
Is, is there a recommended percentage of your, of your revenues that should be in debt? You know, like in your house, do you say you shouldn't have more debt than this amount or that amount?
Your recommendation from the state is the, we got a recommendation on our stabilization account between, between five and ten percent. Dick, is that correct?
Eight, eight to ten.
Eight to ten.
Eight to ten. So we should be around fourteen million, uh, one point four million right now.
Fourteen million, great.
But Mary Ellen, to your question, and you know, are there guidelines as to, you know, what percentage of our budget should be servicing debt? I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
I think, I think it's, I think it's a matter of what, you know, what our appetite as a town is for debt.
Yeah, yeah.
So you, you subscribe to my wife's theory, right?
Which is?
You don't care how much I make, what's the debt?
Most of that money, right?
There's checks in the book, there must be money.
I went through a fifteen-year history and typically we've carried between, and Dick, might correct me, five to nine percent, uh, part of our budget is our debt. You know, there've been like spikes like when the high school came on, but then something fell off. So that's been typically where we, we've held it. Tried to hold it under ten percent. There wasn't like something that just jumped in. But that was, that's not a requirement, though.
It's just like a guideline or whatever.
We've done. Doug said we're gonna see a fall-off, not next year, but the year after, we'll free up a hundred and eighty in the green metals, which we've been talking about for years. Hopefully, a little more revenue structure as solar projects come online and bring a different revenue stream in. You know, hopefully in the six-figure number to give us a little more capacity.
I, I, I think the one thing with the way we've used debt and from my observation, uh, even before I had this job, is we use debt to try to flatten spikes in, um, in tax rate. We probably use debt more than we use actually stabilization for that. So that we have a predictable, consistent increase in the tax rate year to year. Um, you know, I think that's been probably pretty good management advice.
Were you gonna say something else?
Comment. I mean, one of the arguments for debt is that if you have a genuine capital item, the people who enjoy the benefits of that capital item over the years should also contribute to the cost. So if you pay, if you have a half a million dollar debt, you pay it off in three years. How long will that radio system last? And so basically you are squeezing the current taxpayers uh, and, and letting taxpayers in the next fifteen years or twenty years uh, avoid the cost of an amenity, uh, that will function well for, for them.
And I know, I agree that this is gonna be your decision and you know a lot more about this than I do, but it seems to me as a, as a taxpayer, that if you had money, I'd wanna share in a little of it. So, that's, I mean, I don't know, that may be, that may be naive and, and whatever, but it just, that's how it occurs to me, so. But good luck to you, it's a big decision.
I don't, Mary Ellen, I don't think that's naive in the least. This, this, this is the money of the people in the town.
Thank you. Is, uh, anything else? Because we have the superintendent of schools and some of the school committee members waiting.
I, I think that gives us enough. We're, we are meeting next week. And then we have our public hearing the following Monday. Um, so we'll, we'll, we at advisory will have further discussions, you know, obviously more input on this. But this has been very helpful. Thank you for, uh, thank you for taking this time and putting us on the agenda.
Thank you.
I saw an email today. So further than that, are you considering having your public hearing at T W B if the, uh, if everything else works out?
Yes, we, we've been speaking with Rick Green about it, and, um, he has spoken with, his name just slipped out of my mind, the, uh, yes, yes. And he, Herb believes that given enough notice that he can make it work in terms of, you know, getting people out, getting the school cleaned up, set up. So as of now, the plan is to have our public hearing at T W B.
I think, I think we just have to give the schools the notice of, of our intention to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody.
Yep, bye-bye.
Do we have agreements? Do you have a revised copy of, of the warrant?
So did we make, excuse me, make a formal motion to open the warrant?
Okay.
Revise the text of Article?
Seven.
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 A second.
All in favor? All right, uh, next item on the agenda is the Hampton Wolverham Regional School District Superintendent here, I believe, and well, no, he's on, he's on the Zoom.
I am here. Good evening. I went, I went back and forth today saying to me first, come here and, and do Zoom. Um, but as you can see, I'm sitting in my office, so if you needed me to be there, I could be there in, in a few minutes, but I think the last final decision was that we're gonna meet by Zoom today.
And our two representatives?
Um, so good evening.
Yep, uh, Mars here as well as Michelle Boudreaux.
Okay.
And Aaron Osborne, who I'm gonna introduce to you shortly, is here as the Director of Finance, Operations and Human Resources as well too. So before we get started, just, I want to just go off of what Doug and Carol just said, um, about using T W B for, um, your meetings. Just if you just let us know the specifics of that, um, because the requirements of following the CDC guidelines and, and signing in and the close contact and the amount of people, everything that goes along with that, we can work with you guys on that to make sure we're following all the protocols that we have um, in having, um, community in any of our schools as well too. So if you just, um, work with us on that, we'll absolutely work with Herb to make sure that all happens. We follow the guidelines that have been, um, put forth by us as well too. Fair enough?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. So you have a Y program over there.
Well, I'm gonna get there. Can I, can I, can I just do some introductions first if that's okay?
Well, okay, go ahead.
So, uh, good evening and, and welcome, um, to the twenty-twenty school year, day three. Um, we just finished of a hybrid. Um, we're one of the first communities, school districts in, um, the Western Potters State publicly that have opened up our schools, um, which we're really excited. We're working through, um, some things, but certainly has been, um, thank goodness, a successful first three, three days. I have with me tonight, um, Aaron Osborne, like I said earlier, who is the new Director of Finance, Operations and H R. And I know we had some meetings that we were scheduled to meet, um, tomorrow at ten o'clock, but this sort of superseded. Um, but it's my pleasure to introduce Aaron. Um, some of you have an opportunity, I know both Doug and Carol were a part of the interview process um, when we're doing the, um, the vetting for our new, um, Director of Finance and Operations person. So they had a chance earlier to, to meet Aaron as well too. Um, but I'm gonna just turn it over to Aaron to do his introduction and, and welcoming as well too.
Hi there. Um, so I come to Hampton Wolverham with, uh, gosh, it's now, I think, eleven years of, of specific school experience. Um, I'm a, a career changer. I was, uh, believe fifteen, sixteen years of prior experience in, uh, business and finance, uh, in the private sector, blended into, uh, some municipal, working for housing authorities. Um, and then sort of caught the teaching bug. Uh, about six, five, six years into, uh, teaching, I had a principal who, uh, knew I had a background in business and finance and dragged me along with her into a, a finance role, um, a semi-instructional slash finance role. Unwinding some grants for her at Southbridge Schools, uh, eventually became the Director of Finance and Operations there. Um, and have been a, a little bit of a journeyman, uh, in the role, but I'm, I'm hoping to set down some, some roots here in Hampton Wolverham and, uh, just looking forward to, uh, to getting this here off the ground. It's been, uh, kind of jumping from one moving train to another moving train, as, as we say. Going into full swing, uh, I'm sure many of the people on this, uh, this call are aware of the, the challenges we have around technology and Chromebooks. Uh, and we're doing our best to, to kind of keep up with those. I've been working with Tom Mazza and, and with Al to, uh, make sure that we get technology to our, our students. Uh, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have them. Um, otherwise, uh, we can talk about the issue at hand.
And, and I know that, you know, we would normally be doing some visits to both Hampton and Wolverham. We just haven't had the opportunity with opening school up and also being respectful of the town, um, office and being open and, um, coming into your, your environment as well too. But we welcome Aaron. Um, he's gonna be a great addition to our team.
Thank you.
So we're here to talk, I think the conversation was regarding, and I, I'm sorry, Bob, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I felt that was important just to do some introductions first about the Y program, um, and its location at T W B if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes. So what's the program?
So we have had, so it's, it's a program that has been taking place in our community for, I can't begin to tell you how many years. Um, and I wish I could tell you way before even I have. Um, it's a program we've offered to, um, was normally housed at Green Meadows. We've housed it at, um, at, I'm sorry, at Mile Tree. We offered it at, at Sewell. We've offered at all of our schools that we give an opportunity for families both before and after school if they need, um, childcare, if they need an opportunity before school starts, a school gets out, they have an opportunity to have their children being overseen by the Y program. Um, we've had it at Green Meadows now, I can't tell you for how many years, like I said. Um, but it's definitely a service that we provide to our, our families of the Hampton Wolverham Regional School District. And I know that we've already have families that, um, are needing that as part of their regiment to be able to make sure that they get to work in time. Um, and that their, or hours of their work might not necessarily go along with the hours of, um, of our schools. Um, but again, it's nothing new. It's a program we've offered for years, um, in all of our schools in Hampton Wolverham.
How do they transport the kids to the schools?
So what they do is parents drop them off in the morning, um, by their own car, and right now the, um, the Y is providing transportation. Again, we haven't started yet. We're waiting for the meeting to take place with you guys. Our schedule for tomorrow. Um, but then the Y is gonna provide transportation to the individual schools. And Eric, jump in at any time because I know you've been working directly with the Y as well too, so.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Initially, they will, they will provide, they have some of their own transportation. They will begin by providing transportation until we can, uh, sort of normalize our bus routes, and then we will, um, shift a few routes to be able to, uh, to bring students there for aft, before and after school, or from there for before school and to there for after school.
So I, I, I think it's a wonderful program. I think it's needed, but here's, here's, here's the problem. Uh, number one, our lease agreement with the Hampton Wolverham Regional School District says that they have to get approval from the selectmen for the use of the building for, uh, other, other programs other than, uh, than education. And also the governor's, uh, COVID nineteen order number forty-nine says that remote learning enrichment programs must be approved by the municipality in which the program is located. So now we've located this program at Thornton Burgess School. The municipality hasn't approved it. The order also says that the municipality is responsible for verifying that the program complies with the minimum standards for operation. It says that the, the municipality, which would be the town of Hampton, must acknowledge that during the period in which the remote learning enrichment program is operating, the municipality will, will be responsible, the town of Hampton will be responsible for regularly monitoring the program to determine whether it's operating in compliance with the minimum standards of operation, including a limitation on hours of operation, and also notifying E E C of any non-compliance, and also monitoring, uh, any of the program's, uh, minimum standards. So uh, you haven't approached the town, you haven't approached the selectman about using the building for that, and we haven't learned, we, the municipality, the town has not approved the program because we didn't know about the program. We only kind of learned it by, by happenstance. So that's an issue. What do you think?
So respectfully, yes. Um, so one of the things is that we've had this program at Green Meadows in all of our schools, like I said, for years. We just changed the location. So it's a program that's been approved by the municipalities of both Hampton and Wolverham forever. So all we've done is actually just changed the location from Green Meadows to provide for our families to T W B. And let me explain to you the reason why we did that is because we're, we're actually practicing and making sure all the guidelines that we're following are taking place. Um, everything that takes place with the CDC and Department of Education.
And, and let me interrupt you right, let me interrupt right there, okay? I don't know if the town approved the program at Green Meadows. I don't know that, if they ever did or not. This is a different thing now. This is the governor's order, go, COVID order, which puts it directly on the municipality that we have to be responsible for verification of the program, that we have to acknowledge that it's adhering to all the COVID guidelines, and that we have to acknowledge and are responsible, notifying for any non-compliance or that you're operating under the minimum standards. So this is new. This isn't like, oh, we're gonna put an after-school program at Green Meadows.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure, Don can maybe say if you've ever approved that or not, but, uh.
Well, this does seem to be a little different, Al. I mean, you had an after-school program at Green Meadows. This seems to be like a, more of a.
It's a full-day program from eight o'clock in the morning till six o'clock at night.
Right, remote learning, different than, to be honest, the Green Meadows thing, which was honestly a little more daycare, I thought, and I see Paul on the chat here, I don't know if he can offer some historical perspective. Is there plans also for a facility like this in, well, you mentioned about the pre-existing Green Meadows one. Where was the pre-existing one in Wolverham?
Um, I, like I said, there was one at Stony, not Stony Hill, um, at Mile Tree, at, um, Sewell Road and Mile Tree Sewell Road. Um, yes, those two programs. We offered, but wait a minute, we offered it to all the schools. We just had them in those locations.
So they changed from site to site each year or?
Nope, nope, just, yep, there are several sites, yes. Yep.
So I, I think for the purpose, if I can say, uh, of the governor's mandate, I, I think Hampton Wolverham, um, as a school district, as a regional school district, um, does operate as its own municipality of sorts. So I, I would think that actually, um, we would qualify as, as the approving body for that under, uh, or, or not the approving body, but the, the body that's tasked with making sure that they follow CDC guidelines.
I'm not sure that, we had Laurie McCool on the conversation last week, and I don't think that was her interpretation of it.
Our lawyer doesn't believe that either.
Okay.
So, so you know what? The, the original intent was to, I think I sent over a week ago, or maybe even a couple of weeks ago, let it, um, an email to, to get an opportunity to meet with you guys regarding, um, having a Y program, switch locations from Green Meadows to, to T W B. Um, the other part is I know we're scheduled tomorrow to meet, um, to go over this. The Y program has not started yet. We're looking to get that started next week because this is something that our community needs, right? Our residents in Hampton and Wolverham are looking for a Y program. I gotta tell you, the main reason why we're, we're making a change of location is, is because of the, the coronavirus and making sure um, that we're, we're keeping everything safe at all times. Um, so if, once this coronavirus is, and, and our hope is that we're back fail, full face-to-face within the school year, we would then move those locations back to Mile Tree, Sewell Road, and Green Meadows at the individual sites. We want our kids, uh, to be at their individual schools as well too. We just don't believe that having the Y program there is going to be able to keep that, keeping the, the, the guidelines that the CDC is, is asking of us to take place. And that's why we wanted to keep it at a separate location. Um, and we just thought it's really important to provide this for the community. Um, so that's why my intent is.
We're not, we're not arguing, we're not arguing whether we should provide it for the community or should we get a separate location. We're just trying to figure out what I, it's not been approved by us. The governor's order says we have to do that. We have to do certain things of municipality, municipality to make this work. You know, and we would hope that we would have had some type of, uh, notice of this before it was brought, brought to our attention.
And we also have other uses for the building too, and this may constrain our uses. We have Park Rec that hopes to continue to use the building. We have our use for town meeting, which, fortunately Rick Green has been good enough to work with Herb on, hopefully working that out with the advisory and the town meeting. We all have to be in communication. I think that's our point there. I know this is, obviously, you're up against a lot of things, learning about how to start school. We're up against the same thing. There needs to be better communication. And Don, I think has also shared a concern like, how do you work out the money on this?
Yeah.
Who gets the money?
Yep. So, so fair enough, you know, again, the, the situation we're in, you know, Yep, so, so fair enough, you know, again, the situation we're in, you know, things are ever-changing. Respectfully, I did try to arrange some time to meet and I apologize that way, didn't finalize that before the news went out. My intent was to meet with you guys tomorrow before this meeting and yes, you know, we always can get better communication, especially in terms of like what we're doing. So I, that's why we are meeting here tonight to say to you guys, you know, this is a program that I know that you believe in and we believe in, that we want to provide it. And we want to do what's right so that we can provide this to families. But again, the program has not started yet. The other piece of this is it's always been an AM and PM program that just usually in the morning and after school. But they're looking for some families, and both towns are looking for that longer day. They're not going to be teaching them, please make sure you understand that. It's going to be overseeing the kids when they're doing their remote education. The hours would always be seven to five, they're never later than that. We made sure of that, so it won't interfere with Pox and Rec, and we'll also make sure that it won't interfere with any other events. And let me just be very clear right now, right now, we have four people that are signing up for this at this point. So we don't have an overwhelming thing, but we're hoping that, we wanted to make sure that we're holding off that full recruitment till we had a chance to speak to you guys and make sure that this is something that we can provide for our community.
Al, he asked you about what the, about the financial aspect of it, like, do, does the district get money? Does the, should the town get money? I think they were trying to understand, like, if parents are paying for, where does that money go? Where's the revenue going?
Sure.
So, do you want me to talk, Al?
Yeah, that'd be great, Aaron, thanks.
So at this point, our intent was to really just charge them, you know, think of this as a service to the community and really just charge them for any incremental costs at this point. We have a lot of families that are struggling with the reality that they're going to have to arrange.
Where is the money going?
The money is literally going to pay additional custodial costs.
Okay.
That's the only money that's going to change hands.
To the Y or to the region?
The money to the families is going to go to the Y. We are going to bill the Y for the extra cleaning. So we're going to bill them, we're not, the building's there. The electricity and the water and things like that are already there, serving a program we have there and some staff we have there. So we're really just charging them the incremental costs. We really see this as a service to our families and our children.
Okay, so what we have to do, okay, well, so what we have to do as a municipality is we have to figure out how we're going to verify that the program complies with the minimum standards of operation. And we're going to have to acknowledge that to, I guess, to the EEC. And we're going to have to set up a regular monitoring program to determine whether you're operating in compliance, whether it's operating in compliance. So those are the things we're going to need to work on, that you're going to need to discuss with Bob, and he's going to need to bring to us at some point.
Good, and I would welcome Bob for you to come and have the conversation when we do with, with the gentleman that oversees the Y. Because not only is he providing this for our community, but providing for other communities as well too, and they have to follow those same guidelines. So I would welcome him to join that conversation with us.
And they are certified by the EEC. So everything that they're going through, they're routinely visited and monitored by the EEC. So I would imagine that that would sort of dovetail on anything you felt you needed.
Why don't we, why don't you write up a proposal how we're going to get this done and share it with Bob tomorrow?
And it sounds like from your standpoint that you're not looking to use the entire facility, and I think this speaks to Park and Rec's concern.
Yep.
There is no need to go into the gymnasium. Your, I don't want to say daycare, but it is a bit of that, daycare, providing a facility for children to accomplish their remote learning. So for fourteen twenty-four, you spread them out, but you're using classrooms for this as your plan?
That's correct. And, but honestly, we're all going to, we'd like to be able to use the gym, I think the Y for giving kids mass breaks, right? So during the day, if they had a chance to go in the gym and spread a little bit wider, we want to be able to give them that opportunity. And I think that's where Aaron was going with having the custodial built into the Y program so that the cleaning gets done and the onus is on the Y program and not on us.
Parking Rec is normally used at gymnasium at four o'clock.
Okay. So, so we can make sure that with the Y program that they're out of there at three o'clock and they're back in those, the minimum amounts of classrooms on the far side of the building that they would want to be using.
So I have, I have a question regarding this arrangement. Who has the jurisdiction to make these decisions? Is this, is this the school committee? That can, that has the jurisdiction to do this, or is it the town that has the final say on this? I keep on hearing there's a contract out there that says we have the school until three o'clock or four o'clock or whatever. And then I hear bits and pieces about, all right, maybe it's three, maybe it's four, maybe it's, they can do this, maybe they can do that. I, we have asked, Parking Rec has asked on numerous occasions to see this contract, to see what our, what our, the understanding is of how we share this facility. And we have yet to get it.
I believe you can get the agreement from the town clerk. That's where I got my copy before I joined the school committee.
Did you see it? We've asked and we haven't seen it.
I can see if I can find it, I know I have a copy of it.
We would love to see it.
No, it's just a regional agreement, not a lease agreement or anything, just what was part of the agreement.
I want to understand who has jurisdiction to the buildings and when.
My understanding, my recollection of lease and Paul, Doug, anybody can trip in, they have, they have leased the building for educational purposes.
Right.
They can, as Tom said here, you can make an argument, this is part of the educational process. Who's to say, and that gets into the time part there. Historically, Thornton Burgess has been available for use by the town roughly about three o'clock when school is over. Late dismissal, I don't think we've had detention for forty years, I'm not sure. Certainly, my kids never had them. But, and then Green Meadows was four o'clock, roughly, after the Y thing was over, something like that. So it was always roughly three o'clock at Thornton Burgess, four o'clock at Green Meadows, and probably similar in Wilbraham, I'm sure.
So Dave, has anyone ever?
He speaks to educational use of the building.
So Dave, has anyone ever, I'm sorry, because I don't, I don't think it would be anyone on the school side ever not allowed you to use TWB, because I know that we're constantly working with Herb and our custodial staff to make sure that we're accommodating to that, so has there ever been a time that hasn't happened? I'm sorry.
So to my recollection, no.
Okay.
But we have had issues with Green Meadows. Where we've had, we've had to negotiate.
Okay.
So my concern is, is that we're going to be running into the same thing here. And it's not just basketball, we also have other programs that we'd like to run.
Yep. And I think some of the issues that, if I recall in my at least tenure in Hampden Wilbraham with Green Meadows, was if they were having events that the school was having at night, whether it had been a PTO event or they were.
Or banned, or, yep.
Yeah, their own, their own school events that are happening for our, for our kids in Hampden as well too. Those, we try to work closely with you guys on that, but sometimes we have events that run into the night for our families as well too. Those are the only conflicts.
So we've worked around, so I don't believe we've ever had an issue with that because we have time. We know what's, we know what's happening and we can schedule our way around it.
Yep.
We're now talking five days a week for the entire school year, that kind of changes things a bit.
So, so I, I don't want to think that this is for the entire school year, right? So what we're looking at is for, right now, we're taking it one semester at a time, right now. So we're hybrid right now, and we revisit it every semester. Our hope is that we're going to go back face-to-face, but also, let's be very honest, we could be going fully remote if, God forbid, we needed to. And that would change the dynamics of even offering any type of programs taking place in our school district. So everything is right now tenuous because our goal would be, A, to get back face-to-face, and they'd be back at Green Meadows, Mile Tree, or Sewell Road. But we're willing to work with whatever you need, and if we need to make sure that they're not using any gym and they're just in their classrooms at two-thirty on, we're fine with that. And we're just, like I said, I think Aaron's trying to say, and I think we're all in agreement, we're just trying to provide a service for our families, that's all.
I think what I'm concerned about is the whole process and the lack of communications and the getting caught by surprise about what's happening. I think that, for example, I had no information except through spittle but from parents of how the plan was developed for the use of the schools, of who was involved in that plan, were the parents involved? Was it just the school committee, was it just the superintendent? And I think having all that information is helpful when you try to have discussions with the public.
Yep.
And with each other, of who's in the building. I mean, to find out that, just by surprise, that the Y is there and running this special program, and I saw it on their website, is surprising, and I think it's, you've got to do a better job of communicating and seeing that everybody knows the information. For example, how was the plan developed of how we're going to open schools?
So, I'm sorry, Mary Ellen, I'm confused, are you just talking about the Y program or the whole dynamic?
I'm talking about the whole dynamic.
Okay, so I've had, you know, since March thirteenth, I've been reporting to school committee and reporting to the community and have, have opened forums of people asking and having the opportunity to ask questions. We vetted this plan, and I know that Kate has also sent all the dynamic landing plans to both boards, selectmen, both of Hampden and Wilbraham. So you guys have that, all that information. All of that has been, you know, vetted out through our entire community for the last six months. But the final thing was that the district creates a plan. Got a lot of public opinion, a lot of public questions on it, hours and hours and hours of public questioning. Then we present it to school committee, this is according to the Department of Education guidelines, school committee votes on it. And, and then also in between, then you present it to the Department of Education. Department of Education has to approve three plans, then you give it to the school committee, and school committee has to approve that as well too, and then you move forward. There's three different plans, Mary Ellen, I know you already have this, but I can go over it again. One is, sorry.
Hey, we already have this, but I don't ever remember receiving it. Now, I may be remiss in not keeping track of every document that ever comes across my desk. But honest to gosh, I don't ever remember receiving anything from the region.
Yep, you would have got electronically, Mary Ellen, you wouldn't have gotten a hard copy because of Corona and buildings being closed, but everything was.
Did anybody get anything? We didn't get anything.
Not from Kate to the select board here?
Honest to God.
Okay. I, I do know that was sent, but I could have Kate resend it again. It is on our district website, it is everywhere, we've posted that, but certainly I could have Kate send it again to Pam.
Well, 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 for example, was TWB ever considered as part of the plan to reopen schools, to put all the middle schools at the two middle schools? Was that ever considered? I don't know what was even considered. You know, I mean, it just seems to me that, I don't know it, and people that I talk to in the public don't know it. So I think that that's a concern, and I think that a better job has to be done at that.
Yep.
Um, I don't know, and you say, well, I sent this or I sent that, well, we can't all be missing it.
Yep, I apologize if you did not get that. I'll have Kate resend it to Pam again, absolutely. And I know we sent it to some email address, I know there's been some kickback on some emails, that say you're out until October or something like that. I apologize, but I'll make sure that you get it even as we speak. It is also on our district website as well too.
Well, for example, this today, can I, you want to? For example, today I got calls from people that said that they were on Zoom calls where there were a hundred students listening to a lesson being delivered. Okay, I don't, with one teacher. I don't understand how that can be happening. And if it is happening, I would think that you'd be saying to us, we have some concerns about the class sizes, we're going to try to bring them down, whatever. But one parent called me and told me that her first grader, the teacher said, well, you, everybody go and read now a little bit for fifteen minutes. She said, my child doesn't know how to read. How is she supposed to read? This is something I have to educate her at home? I mean, I think that we can always find criticism. But unless we work together and unless we are all trying to get the same goal, it just, I don't, it's not productive. It's just not productive, and I'll stop now, you go.
Let's talk about my favorite subject, money. Any, any word from the state as terms of funding?
So before we go there with Aaron, I just, just a couple of things, Mary Ellen. So, you know, we've, we're in certainly a changing environment than we've ever had. And, you know, everyone, I think in this entire world can do better at communication. I know that we've worked really hard to try to get all this information out. I've probably had as many as if anyone else around, you know, connected messages and opportunities for parents to ask questions. I presented always in front of every school committee meeting as well too. So I just, I just want you to know, this wasn't done in any secrecy, this is everything that's been out and vetted through Department of Education, always on our website, always on the Department of Education website. Could I personally have reached out to each and every one individually? I'm sorry that I didn't, I didn't do that for Wilbraham either, I sort of just send that out on our communication. I will make sure that Kate sends that again, so you have that. And if you always wanted me to come for any questions, to answer any questions about this plan, I welcome, I welcome that. Because it is an ever-changing plan. I truly, I truly understand that, and I will do better at communication, I think we all can do better. But I also push back at you guys and say, call me, you've called me many times that you ever want to ask questions. John, you've called me multiple times on multiple things. Anytime that you want to know something or you want me to come in front of the select board, I welcome that. You know my email's public and you know all of my individuals' personal cell phone that you can call me. I always will come in front of you guys and give any answers to any questions you guys have as well too. So with that being said, the money about questions, I'm going to send that to Aaron who's been here two weeks.
So.
Tell me the money.
Okay, so right now, we're, we're dealing with, with sort of two, two or three different scenarios. Obviously, we have the dilemma of PPP and, or PPE rather, in technology right now. So we are desperately trying, we are actually waiting for a Chromebook order of nine hundred Chromebooks. We have spent a tremendous amount of money on technology, trying to make sure that all of our students have access. That Chromebook order is in the neighborhood of a couple hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Is that going to do the CARES Act, will you get reimbursement for that on the CARES Act?
Yep, yep, some of that will go on the CARES Act. We did make a purchase this spring as well, prior to my starting, of a large number of Chromebooks as well that was used. There was some technology funding put out this spring as, as that started. Our CARES Act grant is in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand. A big piece of what we're spending some of that money on is substitute teachers. We have a lot of teachers out and a lot of staff out on various leaves. So with all of the various COVID programs, we have three or four. So FMLA has sort of expanded into three or four different categories of programs. So we are having to find a lot more long-term subs and people to cover various positions. So a lot of that is going to staffing. And then we are building a tremendous number of Plexiglas shields for many teachers. So our facilities department is buying, we found a lot more cost-effective and a lot more reasonable from a timeframe perspective. All the shops that make Plexiglas shielding have very long timeframes. So our facilities department has started cutting their own Plexiglas and building their own shields, which has cut down tremendously on time and cost. So that's helpful, that is more money that will go on the CARES grant. I believe we will, we are also in for a FEMA MEMA grant. And we are waiting to hear back from them, we've, we've put in all of our information, we're waiting to, it's similar to, I believe, what the towns have received. It's a, it would be a reimbursement program similar to what the towns have received. So we are.
Let me get back, let me get back to the original question.
Sure.
Is there any word on chapter seventy and chapter seventy-one reimbursements?
Chapter seventy is remaining stable, so they have, they have committed to keeping chapter seventy stable. And so those funds should be comparable to, to last year's numbers with, I believe, a very slight increase in most districts.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I would, I would just tell the superintendent and the board that I am the liaison, which I think I told Maura, but to the school committee. So you will see more of me, I will do a better job of keeping communications open. And I did ask a question of whether Thornton Burgess was, was, the reopening of Thornton Burgess was considered when coming up with a plan for spacing and instruction, and I didn't get an answer from the superintendent, I'm wondering if he can answer that.
Yep, absolutely. So it was, it was part of every type of conversation that we had, Mary Ellen. The, the issue was the cost that goes along with that. So if we opened up TWB and we put additional students in there, we'd have to have the staffing that goes along with it. So at the same time, everything that, that Aaron just said, like, we didn't have any of the budget in. All of the PPE materials, all the additional subs, all of the Plexiglas, all that stuff was in any part of our budget that we put together in the end of February, early March. So the part that's the hard piece of this is making sure that we're going to stay within the budget and still not getting the full grant yet. We don't know exactly how much money's coming back in, we still didn't know at the point. But we did look at TWB, it was one of the things that all of us looked at. And by the way, this, again, I can't stress enough, this wasn't done, this planning wasn't done in isolation. It was with teachers, it was with principals, it was with directors. We met every Tuesday and Thursday for hours since March fifteenth and planning this and figuring out every different scenario that we could work out. This is, this is, this is something that no one has ever had a blueprint for, and I've said that over and over again. But answering your question, Mary Ellen, yes, TWB was there, was a consideration, but again, it was the additional cost of that. I got to, and I just got to tell you one other thing, Mary Ellen, I know you're. I gotta, and I just gotta tell you one other thing, Mary Ellen. I know you're talking about the numbers in the remote. But you also got to look at the numbers that those are parents that are choosing to have their kids come into school. At Green Meadows alone, just that have chosen to be face to face, we have a total of 250 students only. When I break it, and I can break it down by grade, but the largest class sizes at Green Meadows is 10 in the classroom, 10. So when you're talking about that, don't, okay, it could be 11. So but give me, I'll get you those specific numbers. But that's how low our class sizes are that are face to face with our students. So when those students have those days that they're face to face, the instruction they're getting, talk about small group instruction, talk about the work they're getting, with the parent and the teacher and special education students, it's absolutely the very best that we can do in a situation like this.
Well, I know that this is a very difficult situation. But I also know that what you say to us now and what I hear from the parents in the community are not the same thing. Okay, I hear that parents have not felt that they were very involved. I hear that parents think the classes, not the face to face, but the Zoom classes are way too large. I'm I'm telling you, I got four, five calls today about the size of the classes. So I mean, I don't know, but I'll take, but we can end this conversation because we could, we can go on privately.
Yeah, but what I, what I'd say to you is you should have those, and I know you're the liaison, but you should have them either reach out to your school committee members from Hamden or as well as the superintendent. That's that's our role to take that for you. So.
Yes, exactly. I do refer them to you, but I don't think that they're comfortable.
So just so you know, we spend, it's, we're still here at this time of night answering phone calls and responding to emails and anything that we need to do. So if there's, even if they want to, if you feel more comfortable and they give it to you, you can feel free to call me because, like I said, you do, or reach out to Mara and Michelle. And and we'll give you some answers as well as well, too.
Mary Ellen, I can even tell you that I've had parents reach out to me through social media, through seeing me out and about, calling my cell phone, texting me, basically telling me some of the same things. And when I've asked them to email the return to school email address, they get a response from Tom Mazza. Some people aren't getting a direct response right away because different circumstances have different answers. But I will say that I've advocated for the parents and the families by saying, we need a frequently asked questions page on the district website. A lot of parents are asking the same questions and they're responding to people individually. When I think if it was all out there, all that information needs to be public. And it is one of the goals that'll come forward when we have our meeting about goals, that we as a district need to be better about communicating. I just think with the way that the situation has been and everything with the CDC and the commissioner, it's been so fluid and changing so frequently. I mean, you get one answer one week and then the next week he changes something else. So I I think that the the district is trying to do their best right now to get you to communicate to the public what they have. But I'd like to better understand what your role as the liaison is going to be because I'm more than happy to tell you anything that I know, share anything that I know, that if all the meetings are posted publicly, we've had, I think, the largest amount of people participated in any school committee meeting since we brought these Zoom. I think we had to open up the return plan meeting.
723.
It was originally 500 people and it went up to like 700. So, I mean, we've had a lot more participation with Zoom. So if anything I can say, Zoom meetings have allowed to a lot more people to connect and made it a little bit easier for some of that. But I definitely think you'll see an improvement from here going forward.
And and Mary Ellen, to to Mara's point, we had a school committee meeting that lasted well over, I think, four hours where we had 723 people on there. So I gotta say, we were definitely communicating with a large portion of people that we we just sat for hours and answered questions they had, and we even actually continued it even longer. We have two email addresses that are set up for families that if they have questions, like Mara said, that they can ask them. So, you know, I I respectfully say that I think people feel very comfortable because the message we have alone tonight that we're answering, never mind every night. But if not, they can send it through an email and we answer those as well, too.
All right, and you'll, thank you very much. You'll be meeting with Bob tomorrow still?
So the last conversation I had with PM is that we weren't going to meet tomorrow. Do you, do you still want to meet tomorrow, Bob?
I thought that the purpose was to meet the new business manager.
But we need to work out this.
More of an agenda as well.
So we can, we can reschedule and 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 have it again tomorrow at 10 o'clock if if that's what you'd still like to have. That's fine.
He's on salary. He's got time.
Thank you.
So so before we, before we move away on this, I want somebody to explain to me how I can get a hold of that lease agreement.
I can get you a copy of that, Dave, and I'll bring it to my meeting with Bob tomorrow. How's that sound for you?
Okay, what time is that meeting, what what time is that meeting tomorrow?
10 o'clock, I guess.
I'll be there at 11:00.
Okay, and and in PM, and I'm not saying, like, you guys should have a copy of that as well, too. I I'd be surprised if you guys wouldn't have a copy of that. Oh, you do? Okay, so I'll take, I can get it for you, too, as well. Because I'm on salary, John.
You should actually allow him to get a copy from the town hall. That's how I got it originally.
Well, we've asked, we have asked and we have not gotten it.
I could bring one tomorrow because as John Flynn puts it, I'm on salary as well. So I'll bring that to Bob for you guys. How's that?
Thank you.
I'll make a copy for you tomorrow. Okay, okay. See you tomorrow at 10:00. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the PVTA contract extension, tri-town trolley.
Yep, and we are doing all tri-towns at this point.
Just to, okay. All in favor? Special town meeting warrant signing. We're gonna have to change, we're gonna have to. Yeah, we can just sign it. And appointment of the ambulance oversight committee.
Well, we're still showing three interested individuals.
Okay, so.
Did we get a number? Did we get a name from advisory?
We didn't get a name for advisory, but they said they would appoint someone. Is someone from advisory still on? So can we appoint these people?
Make a motion to appoint the three people interested in serving on the advisory name, Mrs. Sterling, Mrs. Warner, and.
Second.
To a term till June 30 of the next year.
June 30, yeah, all right. So I just have, I just have two, I just have a comment on that. As, as I want to do.
I'm shocked on you. So retiring.
I don't know what it is. The, I, oh, I just want to point out that the 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 ambulance oversight committee is to meet quarterly and is to to consist of members of the town, the people we appointed. But it's to oversee the annual review of costs and evaluation of quality of service and to improve protocols. And I think they need to, they need to be cognizant of of the, some things like like key, key performance indicators, quality assurance and quality improvement, and they need to look at those things.
If I make a suggestion, I think on your line, let's invite them into our meeting. Once we have all seven locked in. And you can review with all of them if this is what we expect.
Okay, but I want to also point out that in Mrs. Sterling's case, she's been a vocal advocate or proponent for for the ambulance for the fire department. And she also works for an ambulance company. And I think that she would bring some important information to the committee that they could help serve. Okay. I was back and forth whether she should be appointed because of a possible conflict, but I would request that she fill out a disclosure form with the town clerk. And that would cover her and us because I think she can bring some important information, particularly about about key performance indicators, quality assurance and quality, quality improvement. So on that, I'll I'll take a vote. I'll in favor of the three.
Don, the reporter for the reminder wants the names of the three people appointed, so if you just mention those again.
Robin Warner, Donna Hatch, and Laurie Beth Sterling.
Would that be best, Pam, if you're on, can you, why don't you type those into the chat so she has the right spelling and everything? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Chairman's proposal to address the immediate safeties at the firehouse. We've talked about that on the Warren article and potentially getting a trailer. Any other comment on that? Okay, continuing examination of regional dispatch alternatives.
Sure, we've given you two new items since the last meeting. One of them is benefits that would be available to Hamden dispatchers should there be a change. Number two, this afternoon, I sent out written minutes of the meeting of August 26th with the town of Wilbraham officials.
Do we, Wilbraham is still looking for us for a.
Yes, they they want a number. They want an answer to the question, how much are you willing to pay?
I still go back to, and this, maybe this is historical. I think it's the role of the chair to meet with the chair of Wilbraham, not to make a decision, not to decide on something that doesn't involve the board, but to open up communication. I don't care if it's Don and Bob meet with Nick and Bob Russell and say, hey, this is where we stand or something. And just and then bring that back to our board. And I think that's perfectly acceptable. I go back to my interpretation of the open meeting was no decision shall be made outside the level of eye. And any discussion that's had is brought back and rediscovered in public. I think it's certainly appropriate for Don's role as chair to talk to his town partner in other towns and say, this is our concern, and then bring that back to us.
Would the board approve that?
I I think that.
Yeah, we gotta move this quickly.
If the, if the chair is representing the position of the board, that's perfectly acceptable to me. If the chair is not, we were, I was at a meeting, John, that you were at, where you put forward a suggestion of what a proposal would be. You said we would give you $100,000, we would whatever. It had several, it said, I looked at it today, just before I came here.
No, I didn't say what, so what if we, what if we, what if.
No, it wasn't. That's, that was my point. But whatever, okay? I think that we cannot have one person. That if that one person goes forward and represents what we as a board feel, I think that's one scenario. I think if one, if one person goes forward representing what they feel, then that might not be the feeling of the board. And I'm sure it's, I don't think it's that productive. I think, for example, the issues that are before us right now seem to me to be, what is the price we're going to pay? Okay, is there a price we're going to pay? And it's, and the control of the controller management. Without controller management, you can't give a price, number one, okay? And that's what both of the examples that that Mr. Markle said, sent to us said, both of them have had problems with control, okay? Both towns, okay? I spoke directly to the one, the Shirley and Air contract, and they have had problems. And they are similar to us in large, larger community, smaller community, okay? Is that not true? And Holbrook is 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 also has problems, okay? But that's a whole nother issue, but that's the control issue. And before you have the control issues straightened away, I don't see how you can have the financial piece straightened away. The financial proposal is backwards. It is saying, you make a proposal to us and we will say whether we'll take it. Well, it's like going into a car dealership. Do you go into a car dealership with no prices on the cars and you say, I'll give you $5 for that car? How about we start negotiating? That's not negotiating. You see the price and then you go from the price. You buy your house. You see the price that the house is on the market for and you make an offer.
All right, so how do you propose we go about this?
I propose that they change their position on management. Once they've changed their position on management, then we can get into a discussion of finances.
What what position on management do they have? They haven't.
They have a position that we will be invited, we can have a, we can have a, we can have a statement of our concern, but they will be the decider.
I've seen nothing official like that. That was a topic of discussion that we could have something. I look at the Holbrook one you sent over to us today. That had a perfectly acceptable, I thought, structure where all towns are in a committee and discussing.
That was not what they were saying. They said vendor and customer. That's exactly what he, he said it three times when I was at meetings. We will be the vendor, you will be the customer. That doesn't mean that you're equal. It really doesn't.
You're assuming that. You're assuming that that is going to be the way it's discussed.
He said you can give your opinion, but we would make the decision. He absolutely said that.
I think we are at a point here, we have been beating this to death.
I agree with that.
I think we have four things in front of us, which three are viable. Keep the operation here and look for some savings if possible. Go to Wilbraham and negotiate a price. Go to Westcon. We already know what the price is. And in my opinion, we do not have any type of say at the board or any type of control. At Westcon, I know there's been discussion, well, we're one of five, well, we're one of five. We're the smallest community in terms of population for Westcon with, in the current configuration, serves over 100,000 people, of which we have five. So when they make a decision how to run the dispatch thing, I don't think they're looking at how it helps Hamden rather than the whole picture. I think, in my opinion, if we're to move, we can make it work out with Wilbraham. The number is important. That's why I think the chair needs to go and explore. A number that thrown out there, we threw out 100. Why? Because Westcon is going to charge us 100. Whoever might say, well, we should get the same thing as they do. They might say that, they might not say that. They're also making money on additional incentives as well. Are they wronged us for money? Well, they see Westcon getting money. Why shouldn't we get the same thing? And the state's paying for it anyhow, so it's nothing out of your pocket. The proper thing to look at, and I think Don articulated this before, I know people on the Zoom call have as well, what happens after year five? We know we're covered up to a certain point in the agreement. What are the other towns doing? How do we protect ourselves? There is a back out in some of these agreements we've seen. But to go back to, we got to get off the dime here. I think we have two good proposals in front of us and the board should pick one.
With regard to finances, I think it's nearly impossible for the town of Hamden to offer to pay a fee when we have no basis for it. We don't know how much it will actually cost the town of Wilbraham to provide the service. What we do know is that the state 911 office is going to scrutinize that fee. And it must be comparable in some ways to fees that are charged around the state or to costs that are incurred around the state for dispatch services. And so if in fact, if if the town dispatch office or the selectmen could come up with an estimate of the cost of providing the service, then I think a proposal from the town of Hamden would be more realistic and have a good chance of being approved by the state. But I, I mean, how do we, how do we come up with a number? Just pull it out of the air? We know what the figure is at Westcon. They have a different cost structure. I mean, I think at one point it was mentioned 50,000. At another point, I've heard the number 100,000 for Wilbraham. I don't know how we, I don't know how we offer to pay a fee if we don't have some basis for estimating costs. All right, maybe that can be worked out with the chairs.
That's something. So I'd like to suggest our chair and our town administrator, set up a meeting, explore our concerns with them. Try and come to some way we can get to something that he can bring back to our board.
Okay. Okay with that.
So, so John, this is Dave, or gentleman, Mary Ellen, this is Dave Turkat. I have a question on this. So any agreement, is that agreement going to be forever? Or is it going to have a time limitation on it where you renegotiate?
Typically, if I can speak, the Holbrook one, well, not forever. There are, like any other agreement, you have it for a period of time and you have different opt-out abilities. I saw the Holbrook, either party could step away with no penalty. So that, that was, I thought, a great model.
Yeah, that was a good.
Shirley and Air, it was two years.
It was two years.
And then it just done a three year.
Right.
Okay, so.
You have other, you have other costs because you'd have to start up and, you know, whatever. So it would not be a simple walk away.
Our dispatch equipment is leased. So if we went with a merge with some other facility, we wouldn't be stuck with this equipment that we now own and can't do anything with.
Right.
And if we tried to restart, we could re-lease and start the operation right back up.
Correct. That's exactly my point. So it's not, it's not a doomsday kind of thing. So even if you were to work with Wilbraham and it didn't work out, walk away.
That's true, yeah. So I. So I go back to get this off our plate and get this moving done. I would suggest that the chair try and set up some way to come, converse with the town administrators as well. I'm trying to come to, I want to say, maybe it's even agenda, whatever, let's come up with talking points that I need to.
Proposal.
Yeah, I mean, you got to believe Wilbraham has got a number in their head. Anything below that number, they're going to say, well, we want a little more. Anything above that number is going to go right in their pocket. And we're not going to be the wiser.
It could be, but there's the same thing as people coming to us, like a solar farm coming to us. We want something because we have to present it to you, we're making something for you, the taxpayers. Why are you putting up with the solar farm in town? Well, we can reduce your taxes, it's incumbent upon us as a board to make it right for you, that's an example.
If, if you're going to meet with them, I don't understand what they're going to give to us, we know what we've got from them. So it's just going to be us giving to them. Okay, we wonder, we don't need anything in management, that's okay, thank you very much for letting us sit at the table. Okay, we won't give you, you know, fifty thousand, we'll give you a hundred thousand. We'll give you, is, is that enough, or is a hundred and twenty-five what you need? What are they giving to us besides the, the luxury of working with them? Or the, luxury is not the right word, but the, the opportunity of working with them.
Well, what's your alternative?
My alternative is to see if they will move on either of those questions. If they will not move on either of those questions, I would, I would probably right now stick with what we have.
Well, we don't know if they're going to move on the questions until the chair talks to them, so, Don, watch out for conversation.
But he's not negotiating with them and he's not having a dialogue with them. He's just saying, these are the two things that we think are important still. These are things that are still on the table, and, and do you want to move on either of those?
Well, we'd like to have a dialogue about it, and please do.
And there's one other critically important issue, and that is if you are approaching a decision, let's say it's a decision to go with Wilbraham, then I have to call the state office and ask them if they're willing to cover the cost of extending the fiber up, roughly a hundred and five thousand dollars, will they cover that cost also, which is something we should know? Or as we're making.
Plus, we also would have impact bargaining.
Impact bargaining as well.
Well.
So, Don, will you be willing to?
Yes, I will, yeah. Okay. Oh, no, I want to take an Uber so we can get the money, so we can get some money back.
Quickly, uh, the town administrator reported that we actually got money from Uber and Lyft as part of the, uh, something, the agreement that.
So the questions are management.
So two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Management, want to move on management, what's the other one? Money, money.
Management and the cost, rationale for the.
Okay.
We, we can't give them a proposal on money until we know what they're.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Let's go, Dave, from Main Street Water, we're going to, we're going to defer that because we don't have enough information on that. And the, uh, the executive session, and we're not holding that tonight, it's, it'll be the twenty-first. So we have selectmen reports?
Um, I attended the planning board meeting last week, three A and R proposals, and the A and R for Crossroad was accepted. And that's really a major thing to report from there. I did see some conversation online about a potential flagging and maybe a new subdivision being kicked around, and this is one that was actually back in the nineties, next to Country Pine, and I don't know if Ted's on, but I did see that this conversation that maybe there's something brewing down there. Didn't come before the planning board though, but I think it's in Concomit, Ted?
Don, yes, they've been meeting up there for, since the fall. And it, subdivision's probably a long stretch. Uh, a lot of the property is wet, could there be a couple or three homes, yes. But it's a long way from any kind of decision. The COVID nineteen has played heavy into it, the drought has played heavy into it. There's a lot of water and a lot of streams, both permanent and intermittent, and the drought has affected that. We've gotten multiple, um, uh, emails of information from both DEP and the state. It's, um, not going to go anywhere real quick to my understanding, but it is being looked at, yes.
If it's the one that was going to go in by Country Pine and then go up to the east, what, what really put the kibosh on it last time was endangered species.
Oh, but that's up there too, there's, there's a lot of endangered species. It's, it's, the entrance would be to the east of the country pines.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, it's a narrow entranceway with a big, huge backlot.
And the polygon was like covering the entire thing, it was just, yeah. So that's the reports from planning, I'm not sure of any other, yeah, board.
I have nothing, Mary Ellen.
No, I'm sorry.
Town administrators report.
Okay, um, the landfill solar project, uh, proposed by Amoresco is currently being held up by Fish and Wildlife. They did an inspection and found that there are two endangered species, a box, a box turtle and a wood turtle. And that what they typically do is that they require you to mitigate by finding alternate habitat and, and setting that land aside for these species. Right now, uh, Amoresco is waiting for a decision by Fish and Wildlife as to how many acres will be required for mitigation. The town has nine acres adjacent to the site, which we could easily put into conservation for that purpose. There may be more acreage required, so we're waiting for information from the state on that. Agenda management software, we're still looking at that. You just did the, the appointments to the ambulance oversight committee. Uh, I have to report that, uh, we have had several incidents of snakes getting into the building here at town hall. Not just two-legged snakes.
I was going to say, I was just going to mention that, but I didn't, I let that pass.
I haven't seen, it's caused quite a stir. Uh, there are people who get really upset at the thought of snakes. Uh, we did have one right over here, which we picked up, we put it into a shopping bag and took it out to the woods. But at some point in the near future, I think the town is going to have to, uh, consider an expenditure for the foundation to shore it up, close it up. Because I then took a tour with Jane, and you can see places where obviously the animals are coming in. As the weather gets colder, more are going to be looking for something warm, so.
Now, when we've looked at the town hall in the past, have we gotten estimates on those kinds of things? You know, like we did the Google and all that kind of stuff?
That's the report I gave you, the, it was like between five and six hundred thousand.
For the whole thing, though? Yeah, and do we know how much it was for the foundation?
Yeah, they had breakdowns for different things.
You don't remember.
How much more is it online, I believe? Didn't you, we put that online, right?
The study, the town hall study.
I think the shoring up of the foundation is not going to be wildly expensive. I think you can just take some concrete and shore it up now. I mean, maybe a long, a, a more important project would be delayed till later. But just closing the building up so we don't get animals coming in, uh, it's going to be something that, uh.
So does that seem like something we should get an estimate on and to see what it would be? I mean, if it's five hundred dollars, we might as well get it fixed for five hundred dollars to keep the people safe, if it's not, or, you know, comfortable.
If you saw the reaction that I saw several times when there were snakes in the hallway, when there was a snake in the hallway, not a threatening snake, a small snake, snake. If you saw the reaction that I saw, uh, you would understand, I think, a little better that it's an issue that's got to be addressed.
So do we want them to get an estimate from somebody, or ask somebody, or, or proceed on it, or just let it go?
You want an estimate?
I think an estimate.
It's a first step, and, you know, if it's sixty thousand dollars, we don't do it, but it won't, you know.
Right.
Okay, uh, we did convey the message on vacation requests, that they should be conveyed to department heads and department heads to me and the board of selectmen, uh, with enough lead time. I also told the department heads and staff last week about the forthcoming survey of residents regarding business hours at town hall and whether or not the town hall should be open on Fridays or late on a particular weeknight. No one commented, uh, when I took the survey last time, which was last fall, I think like November, I have to say there was substantial opposition to changing the hours, but uh, we're going to go through with the survey as, as the board's recommended. I, I'm happy to report that the purchase and donation of land with a conservation restriction to the Minnetog Land Trust has been finally repeated. This has been a long process, started before I came here, and it's finally wrapped up, and that land is now in conservation restriction. The first meeting of the disabilities commission is set for tomorrow. Uh, the agenda, the main agenda item is going to be applying for a planning grant from the state to examine the buildings and see what we need to do. Once we have that plan in place, then we can apply for funding from the state to undertake any measures that are necessary. Uh, we had a health subcommittee meeting this morning.
Shall I, shall I say a couple of things? I, I let them go right by me. Um, the nurse has been NABEN certified, and so she's working on, you know, doing COVID checks and so forth. Uh, we discussed flu shots, um, they will have a clinic, a free clinic at the senior center, and I don't have the date in front of me, but it's coming up, it's September something or other, I don't know, shortly. We, um, discussed Cumberland Farms because they were taking up the tanks there today and removing some of the land. Uh, we don't know who's behind that, but, but we're pleased to see that it's being done. Um, and then the other thing was, um, we discussed outreach and how we can have the nurse either sponsor different activities or have a newsletter or, um, you know, do things to let us, to let the public know that she's here and that she has skills that she's willing to share with people, um, and so she's going to begin on that.
Can I speak, Mary Ellen? Mary Ellen, the Combi's thing is being done by the corporation themselves. They're removing the dirt in the front that's contaminated. Once that is done, then that bio, the high, uh, piece of land becomes a viable piece of property. If the DEP and other agencies approve what they do.
Oh, the guy told me that he was taking tanks out.
There's been dirt in the tank, I think, that's what that big structure is for, they put the contaminated dirt in it.
He said he was taking dirt, he did say tanks and dirt, but.
They're, they're taking all the contaminated dirt out, that tank is a water tank to, to water down the soil to keep it from flying around.
I asked him if he was taking, I asked him if he was taking the building down, and he said, no, the building's in great shape.
If squares.
That's what he said to me, I went, oh.
The basic steel structure is sound, they will have to do a complete gutting and rebuilding of the interior.
Yeah.
And it may, it may be sold and bought by someone, it's up to Combi's to decide what they're going to do with it, once, once it's cleaned up.
Well, thank you for the info.
Uh, two more items, uh, the senior center has requested a professional Zoom account like the one that we have, so I've agreed to that, uh, they have a lot of, a lot of use for it. And also, the two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy cents that we received from the Lyft and Uber fee, they asked for extensive documentation as to how we're going to use it, including attachments. I said we're going to use it to buy hand sanitizer. Uh, as far as upcoming meetings, uh, I mentioned tomorrow the disabilities commission. Also, we opened bid for the highway garage tomorrow at one o'clock. And that's the report.
We need to vote on this, we have a.
Motion to approve a request for a one-day general license for a bridal shower for under twenty-five people or under on Sunday, September twentieth, two to seven, at the greenhouse.
Another marriage, I second it.
All in favor? Anything else to come before the board?
Reminder to the board, I was kicking over what we had in the past, and we did push it this year, we, because of issues of money, obviously. But we need to keep Academy Hall on the radar, uh, that painting issue for next year. We did have the commitment from the historical society that they would help out with the cost, if we had a reasonable cost, so. If we could keep that, if we have a tickle file for next year's ATM, which is not to worry about.
It's run higher than we thought, didn't it?
Uh, it's such an open structure, I think, you know, maybe we can get somebody into looking at a different way to do that, you know, it's all about keeping the pipes. That's not what I understood, so we bumped up the number to cover the extra electricity used by the pump. They said they would cover the extra cost based on the heat, they were shocked how much it went out, but they said they would write the check for it. Oh, then you'd send them the bill, you know, when I talk to Linda, she should just bill us, we'll look at trying to drop it down next year, yeah.
Maybe we could look up when you have, when you have two minutes or two, twenty hours, um, what we agreed to with them. Remember, there was a figure, they. Yeah.
They didn't think it was going to be that bad.
And what it should be. Yeah.
Yeah, they'd look up.
Any further bids to come before the board? Hearing none, most to adjourn?
Some, some.
All in favor? Thank you. End of meeting for all.